It's amazing how-
Soon as we're done, okay?
Those friendships early in-
We're ready to go. Okay, it is 2:30 and we are ready to start our study session dealing with major capital expenditure update on the solid waste landfill. So, this is Jim and Jim Show.
All right. I'm Jim Coach, the Public Works Director. Jim Toich, the Operations Manager, is here as well. We've been promising to give you folks an update on the, all of the capital expenses at the landfill. And we thought we were in good shape, but we did request an 11% increase this past year, and we wanted to explain why, but then also give you a good picture of the major expenditures that could be coming up in the next five to 10 years at the landfill. So that monitoring that fund balance is going to be very, very important. We had a pretty good idea. Thank goodness for Debbie Pack, our Finance Director, that she filled in all the blanks and helped us get it down to a lot higher degree of detail. It did change our numbers pretty significantly, so we were really pleased to have her input into the process, but we wanted to thank her too, as well. Commissioner Hodges had asked a couple of questions, and I'll try to address those in the presentation, whereas we're going through it. The city owns and operates the landfill, and has for a number of years. And we've been, been warning you of some potential major impacts to the financial side, or major capital expenses out there. So we wanted to make sure and summarize those, and talk about our fund balances as of last fiscal year, and then give you a picture of what we proposed, the tipping fees and some of the actions ought to be for the next five to 10-year planning horizon. So we're going to go over those capital expenses, we're going to look at the tipping fees, give you a picture of where the fund balances were at the end of last year, and project it into this year. The major expenses that we do know we will incur are new cell construction. We build a new cell about every five years. The KDHE requires a theoretical calculation of our closure, post-closure costs annually. So we're going to explain that a little bit, and kind of give you a picture of what our current closure and post-closure costs are. We've got landfill gas collection that is also a regulatory requirement. And two years ago, they were proposing to reduce the threshold of landfill gas, which would have made us very likely that we would exceed the threshold within the next couple of years. So we've made some projections on, on the current rule, and then also on the proposed rule. The proposed rule was actually halted when President Trump was, came into office, that him and the EPA had a difference of opinion on regulatory restrictions, and that was one that was placed on hold when he took, his administration took, took the lead. With the, with the tipping fees, we are projecting some fund balance growth, but then also targeting where that growth needs to go. And as you're well aware, the equipment at the landfill, very large excavators, compactors, bulldozers, scrapers, the scrapers cost over a million dollars apiece, so. They do last a long time, but we have multiple scrapers, multiple bulldozers, compactors, trucks and water trucks and all those kinds of things. We've got a chart of the capital expenditures just for equipment. So we're going to make some projections, and then kind of summarize it, and then try to answer any questions that you have along the way. I went into the, kind of the four categories. New landfill construction every five years, going to cost $2.5 to $3 million. The next couple of cells are going to run a little bit more than, than usual, because we've got some wastewater, the evaporation pond will need some work with Cell 21. And then we're proposing to go to Cell 6, which is on the north side of the landfill, and that will require a new road. So rather than just build a cell, we've got some ancillary things that are going to make those cells cost a little more. We're going to talk about, or propose a closure contract, and explain where and when and why later on in the presentation, to preserve, preserve some of the bond rating for the city, and so it doesn't look like we have such a huge obligation. Closure costs, our closure, post-closure is 8.25 million currently. When you think about it, every time we open a cell, theoretically, we should be closing a cell. But because we're building stair steps, we actually have three active cells at a time. We're opening up one down here before we can actually finish the top one. When we reach the ultimate height, then we can actually close the cell. We have two and a half cells that have reached ultimate height, but are not closed yet, so we'll talk about those. Landfill gas collection, there again, it's a moving target as far as the threshold, when that needs to be enacted. And then once we are found to have, over met the threshold, we will have 30 minutes, 30 months to construct a new system. So we've got some, a little bit of time to do the construction, but 30 months is not enough time to collect the money you need. So we're starting early on collecting those funds as necessary. And then, just the equipment costs themselves are substantial, and we've, we've looked at the life cycle of all of the equipment at the landfill. And Larry Hammons, our Superintendent, is back here. He's, he's been very instrumental in, in operating the landfill, but then also in making these projections. Larry does a great job for us, and I want to give him recognition. But the new landfill construction is $2 to $2.5 million. The closure, post-closure contract that we're proposing is about $5 million. The landfill gas collection system is going to be over $5 million. And then our capital costs can be anywhere from $500,000 to almost $2 million a year. So if you, if you're doing the, doing the math at home, that's about $14 million. Our $4.5 million fund balance doesn't pay for all of that. So that was, and it's not all mandatory or necessary, and we're going to explain that. But that was one of the reasons that we proposed an 11% increase this year, and a $2 increase for the next several years per, annually, so. Last year, or currently this year, we're at $36 a ton. And as you can see, the public landfills are listed here. The publicly owned landfills are at the top of the page, the private ones are at the bottom of the page. Salinas landfill at $36. Our current fees was below the public average. The public average is $39.70. There's one really low outlier in there, and that's Coffee County. Coffee County is significantly lower than the rest of the counties, because a lot of what Coffee County does is subsidized by Wolf Creek Nuclear Power Plant. They have a big tax base that none of the rest of us do. So if you take them out of the mix, it actually, the public average is 4172, and we were at 36. So we proposed $40 a ton this year, which puts us right in the middle of the public landfills, and lower than all but one of the private landfills, if you look at them at the bottom of the page. The $4 a ton, we, we collect about 85,000 tons a year, so that'll generate $340,000 a year, which sounds like a lot of money. But at the same time, you remember my previous slide? The previous slide was $5 million here and $5 million there. It takes us three years of that just to make $1 million. So we have to collect in advance of some of these major expenditures. The fund balances, this is as of 2019, and there's, they're, the actuals for last year. I wanted to mention the sanitation fund balance, just because the sanitation is a separate fund balance, but is impacted by the, the solid waste fees. That as we raise the solid waste fees, then our own sanitation department has to pay higher tipping fees as well. You guys have had a lot of conversations, or we've had a lot of conversations about our current sanitation system, and we've, you have approved automated trucks, which we have in the process of ordering, and plan on at least spending down some of that fund balance to purchase the carts. Out of that $1.7 million fund balance, we plan on using $1.03 million on the purchase of the carts. It's not very steady, but we have averaged our solid waste balance for the last five years, and it's anywhere from being flat to a million dollars in growth, but we've averaged $450,000 a year for the last five years. So our fund balance has grown from $2 million to $4.5 million, which is in the right direction. But as you'll see in a little bit, that is not enough to pay for all the expected expenses. The solid waste capital reserve fund is the reserve fund that is used for the solid waste of the landfill equipment, and we do not make regular payments into that. It's actually been stagnant for the last couple of years with just some minor expenditures. The plan for that is to make transfers from our solid waste fund balance to the capital reserve as needed. So that, that'll buy about one and a half scrapers, $1.7 million. Okay, this next slide here is, there's an awful lot of information here, and this is really the background or the meat of the presentation. And we want you to understand how the, the current landfill is laid out, how much of it's done already, where we're working, and where we plan to go. The old landfill, or pre-subtitle D, is this section right here, which is the, the biggest area out there. And that was before there were regulations on lining it and collecting the leachate and all those kinds of things. But that was the pre-subtitle D landfill, and it's been closed or is closed. Orient yourself, north is to the top of the page. The office is right down in here, where the gate is. You come in, drive this way over to the active cells. At the very top of the page here, Cells 1 and 2A are also complete, and they reached their ultimate height and are, are complete, but have not, or have been officially closed. They've got the required cover to be considered closed. 2B, 3, and 4 have reached their ultimate height, but they are not closed yet. They haven't had the extra filter placed over them, and they haven't been put to bed. You notice that when we talk about the proposed cell closure contract, it's just the yellow portion of that, which is the interior portion of that. We can't actually close the entire cell, because our current master plan, we will, we will put material adjacent to the sides of those hills as we expand out. So the, the sides actually aren't complete yet. The top portion, or the top tier, is the only portion that's complete. Cell 5 is down here, and it is, it is getting close to being completed. But there was a change in the master plan a few years back, and instead of going from Cell 5 to Cell 6, they changed it and they went straight south. So we're working on 19, 20, and 21. And the reason, one of the reasons for that is the leachate pond is down here, and because of the natural drainage and the, just the construction activities, it, it makes it more cost-effective to collect that and in the system, working north and south, than coming clear up here in the north. There are, off this page, there are a number of cells right here. Cells 13, 14, and 15 run up and down. 16, 17, and 18 run east and west. Once we complete Cell 21, it's our plan or proposal, we'll work with our, our landfill consultant, but we believe that going back up to Cell 6, for the same reasons that we completed these cells, will be more cost-effective. We will have to build an additional road to get there, this red line, to get there, but we think it's going to be more cost-effective to do that. There again, Cells 5 is getting close, but 19, 20, and then 21 will be in five years. Those are active cells, and we can't close those now. Now, when I talk about closure, post-closure, the regulatory requirements, the KDHE, it's a theoretical, it's, they, they make every landfill do it, but if, if things changed right now, and we had to close the landfill, they calculate a three, a theoretical number on what it would cost to close everything you have open. The, the cells that are at, at full height, and then all the cells that aren't at full height even. So that number is the 8.25 million that we've been reporting to you. We would never do that, you know, barring some natural catastrophe. And we plan on filling these cells and continuing to use the landfill. But that number, every time we open a cell, you think about it, our cost to close it is also growing every year. And by the time we get down to here, we believe that the, the closure, post-closure costs are going to be in excess of $10 million. And that's kind of a $10 million bill that the, the city has, that's on their books, that the auditors and stuff look at. And that's kind of the threshold that, that we believe, we need to start closing some of the, the open cells, so that we don't continue to grow that obligation. But at the same time, there is annual maintenance is required on everything that's open. Additional erosion control, seeding, those kinds of things. And once you put it to bed, and it's, and it's considered closed, it costs less to maintain it than, than, than when it's currently open, so.
Could, could I ask a question at this point?
Yes.
You talk about closure and post-closure costs, and I think, you know, correct me if I'm wrong about this, but those are actually two separate things. You've got the closure costs, which is a couple of million dollars a cell probably, which we seal it up and turn it into its permanent sarcophagus-type state, you know, it's sealed and-
Yes.
And then, which is a, essentially a one-time expense of that amount. And then there's post-closure costs, which have to do with the gas abatement and all of the other care that we have to provide to the facility from now until eternity.
Correct.
And that is post-closure cost. So that is really kind of an annual cost, and when they calculate the closure, post-closure, they basically sum those together for a period of, and I don't know what time they use for the post-closure costs, probably 20 years or something. So the, it's, it's important, I think, to remember that those are two separate things. And one is a one-time expense, and the other is an expense from now until forever, that will essentially be as an operating expense on an annual basis.
Absolutely. And we're going to talk about-
Is that characterization correct?
Yes, yes, that is correct. Even after we, we close it, we have to maintain it forever. We can't reduce ourselves from that obligation. Once we meet the threshold of gas collection, just the operating costs for that system are expected to be $150,000 a year. And then, once the landfill is closed, you still, as long as you're above those thresholds, you'll still have to maintain and operate that system until you've reduced, or you get to the threshold where that's not necessary. So there's a lot of costs, even after it's, we're done with it, that we could incur. Anything else on this slide, Jim?
The number that you were referring to is, for post-closure care is 30 years.
30 years.
That's what's required.
This last cell down here, 21, our leachate pond is right south of that. So when we get to building this cell, we have to modify the leachate ponds and change the route, the road, and there are some additional costs with this next cell construction, which will be about five years from now. So it'll run $2.5 to $3 million versus the, about $2 million that we have been seeing, The, the one big unknown, we know that we're going to have to build new cells, we know that we're going to have to close them, we know we're going to have to buy equipment. We don't know when we're going to have to collect the gas. That depends on the regulatory threshold. And that's the next slide, Jim, if you want to go to it. Currently, it's 60 megagrams a year, and the, the way they calculate that is a, they use a surrogate or collect hexane and methane, and they come up with a calculation, a big loan calculation, as far as how much you're actually, how many megatons of that carbon product that you're producing a year. They had proposed to reduce that from 50 to 34 two years ago. We were in the final, final rule-making, and the current administration halted that, that change. Now, if, if there's a, if we stay with the current administration, we would expect the rules to stay the same. If we change administrations, we don't know how quickly they, they could or couldn't go back. So we've had to plan for that 34 megagrams per year in our finances to be prepared. The next time we'll get an actual test of the, is 2023. So if we exceed the threshold and the rules change, we would have 30 months to build a, design and build a landfill gas collection system.
That 34 milligrams per year is for all cells combined?
Yes, it's a calculation for how much the landfill is producing.
And does that include the pre-subtitle D also?
Yes. It's megatons per year, or megagrams per year, megagrams per year.
But it does include the 66.9 acre?
Yes.
One also, okay.
It's the, the landfill that we're responsible for.
Yeah, I didn't know if that was, okay.
So we've, every five years, they run the test, the official test, and then they calculate it for the interim years. Our next five-year test is 2023. So it could happen in 2023, it could happen five years later, or it could happen in 2033, five years after that. So we've given you three different scenarios of when we think we might have to start collecting landfill gas. Go ahead. The, you can see we're at, right at 24 or 23.8 in 2016. They projected that up, and depending on if it keeps the constant curve or flattens out again, we're projected to be anywhere from 24 to 34. The 34 would exceed that new threshold if they do lower it. The, the current rule is actually this figure, 50 megagrams per year, it's up here. But the, these are our last three times that we've done it. 2023 is the next five-year increment that we'll actually be subject to. But once we exceed the threshold, that 30 months is, is not much time to collect revenues if you haven't already tried to collect it. That $5 million, $5 or $6 million that you'll need to build it, and then $150,000 a year after that to operate it.
Quick question. Do, so how do we, how do we know whether or not our curve is flattening, or our curve is going up if we only do the testing once every five years? Is there any interim means to, to measure between-
They do a theoretical calculation, but they don't actually measure it. It's, I don't know how expensive it is, but it's something they only do on a five-year basis.
Okay, okay.
So you talk about we need to collect, you know, to have some funds available. Have we been doing that, and do we have those funds set aside somewhere?
Yeah, well, we have started. We went from a $2 million fund balance up to a $4.5 million fund balance. But then, we also added $4 a ton tipping fee this year that'll add $340,000 a year. We were growing our fund balance at about $450,000 a year.
But those dollars are also used to open and close cells, correct?
We actually have been opening and closing cells, though we're bonding those and paying for those out of operating expenses. So our fund balance has not been going down as part of that.
Okay. Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
So the 4.5, except for the times that we transfer to the capital fund for purchases, is there for the, I call it the, the gas remediation or whatever?
Right, it'll be for either a closure contract, the gas remediation, or major transfers to the capital reserve for trucks and scrapers and compactors.
Okay, if I might pursue that line of thought, it used to be, and I don't know when, when or if this really stopped, but we used to try to calculate the equipment costs over about a 10 or 20-year cycle. I think we used 20 years. And then we would allocate 1/20th of that total cost into that capital reserve fund every year, and we'd make those transfers. That's apparently no longer being done. Are you, is, does, do your numbers here include restarting that process?
We haven't actually went back and-
And actually setting that money aside, so you're, and then you pay it out of the capital reserve fund, and you don't, you don't take a budgetary hit for a scraper, which is a huge budgetary hit at one time?
Right. No, we've actually got a schedule later on in the presentation-
Okay.
-that shows the one-time expenses, and whether you annualize or capitalize those over a five- or 10-year period is, is possible. I know Debbie talked about, Debbie, we've talked about it with Debbie, on whether or not, there's at least a few years that we think it needs, we need to buy a year earlier or a year later, just because we've got, like, 2031, we've got a huge, like, three things do at once, so it's-
And you need to be ready for that.
And you can spread that out over time.
However you account for it, I just think from a budgetary basis, it looks a little smoother on the budgetary side if you do that out of a reserve fund, rather than out of your regular budgetary accounts. The other question is, is there is, there should be, a post-closure fund associated with this, that we're required to put 50 cents a ton into every year? And that should have about a million and a, oh, million and a quarter in it this time. It's been going for about 25 years. I don't see that on the reporting, and that was intended for post-closure. It wasn't very well-defined, but in the original solid waste rate schedule, 50 cents was set aside for post-closure. And I know I, I did a calculation on that probably 10 years ago now, and at that time, with what we knew then, that was about 50% of what it would take to take care of the post-closure costs at that time. But if, my suggestion is, if we can start setting that aside now, before we have to provide post-closure care, we can establish a balance and a habit of having that money designated for post-closure, so we don't have to, you know, when gas collection becomes necessary, we're kind of ready to step right into that with a little bit of a set aside to absorb any, you know, fluctuations that might occur.
Okay, the, the independent accounting for that, I think probably has been lost since you were, were our financial director. It's my assumption that it's still included in the total capital, or total solid waste fund, but actually, accounting for it separate and calling it out as post-closure money is something that I was unaware of, so.
There's, there was at one time a separate post-closure fund, and on the old numbering system, I think it was 631 or something like that.
Yeah, that's absolutely something we'll look into, Commissioner Franz.
And it would have had about a million dollars in it at that time, I'm thinking.
Well, we do have some unusual accounting in the sanitation fund because of something similar. Some, part of it that is a capital reserve fund-
Right.
-that was set aside for the recycling and the diversion and those kinds of things. But it's still part of the main reserve or the fund balance, so it's-
I'm, I'm wondering if maybe that, that fund was consolidated with the operating fund at the time that we did the software transition. That's entirely possible that those two were, were combined, which probably shouldn't have happened, but, you know, stuff happens sometimes. It would be good to follow up on that and try to get that separated out, because if that's a part of your $4.5 million, you really don't have $4.5 million. It's really something less than that.
Yeah, no, that, that would be good to know.
Because of, you know, a million and a quarter, that should be set aside for post-closure.
Okay. And then, you know, you guys have had a, a lot of struggles back and forth on what the appropriate fund balance is, and, and we can't answer that for you. Right now, we've got a lot of things that we know we're going to spend money on, and then a few things that we might have to spend money on. We wanted to put you in a position where you can, especially in 2023, you'll have money in the bank to do it if you need it, but then you can also make some decisions about what tipping fees you want to charge in the future, based on the more current data, so.
And Commissioner Franz, with this whole exercise, the intent is to transfer that money, to have a true fund balance and an operational fund balance and solid waste one, and then transfer that stuff to the reserves and-
And then have a capital reserve and a post-closure. Yeah, I, I, you know, I'm, I'm on board with that. That's what we should be doing.
Okay, and that goes, that goes into the, just a nice tie-in with the next slide. Now that we kind of know some of the numbers of what, and maybe when, we need to figure out how we're going to pay for the new cell constructions, the closing costs, the post-closure costs, the landfill gas collection, and major equipment replacement. So we had to make some assumptions, and that, you know, you can shoot holes in the assumptions, but we had to start somewhere. We have an annual tonnage of about 85,000 tons right now. And we've had, of course, a few years back, we took a major hit when McPherson opened their own landfill, and we've been recouping some of those tonnage- opened their own landfill, and we've been recouping some of those tonnage, or we have some annual growth, but we assume zero annual growth on the premise that, uh, as Salinas and citizens become more conservative and we increase our efforts for recycling, that we can at least maintain the current tonnage. Um, and we'll go into the tonnages of, uh, of the recycling that we've collected to date. But, um, that's a pretty major assumption is that we're going to maintain 85,000 tons, which is, uh, real close to what we've done for the last three years. Um, as part of the budget process this year, we increased the tipping fees by $4 a ton from 36 to $40 a ton, put us in the middle of the pack, um, and that raises about $340,000 a year, a third of a million. Um, we, we have been experiencing some, some fund balance growth over the last five years. It averages about $450,000 a year. So that puts our, our, our piggy bank growing at about $750,000 a year. Even with those projected revenues, um, we looked at the potential expenses and, and determined that you'll need to raise tipping fees by at least $2 a year from 2022 to 2035. And just to stay positive, um, you could go back to raising it $1.50 a year, um, from 2027 to 2035 because we're looking at about a 15-year planning window. To put it in perspective, though, um, a $2 per ton on a $40, um, cost is a 2.5% increase. So it's just right at inflation or a little over inflation, just the $2 per ton tipping fee increase that we're, we're proposing and we're asking you to look at. And we will need to monitor the EPA regulations, um, which is administered through KDHE, and, uh, whatever the threshold is, plan for that. Um, we may have to go into collections, get landfill gas collections, um, within the next 10 to 15 years. Uh, we, we think that it's, it's pretty important that we reduce our closure, post-closure costs when you, you reach that $10 million threshold. And so we've, in all of our scenarios, we've planned for about a $5 million closure contract, um, to be done in 2028, or 2027, excuse me. And that'll reduce that future obligation down from 10 million down to, um, less than five. We don't think we're going to need landfill gas collection in two years. It's possible, um, that you may need to, uh, we may get told to do it in 2028. It's probably even more probable in 2033 as we keep, um, uh, adding materials to our landfill. It continues to grow, it continues to degrade, and more gas is collected or released.
When you say expect 2033, is that because of the increased, um, gas emissions or do you, is that because we went from 50 to 34?
Well, if you, if you, if, even if you took the current straight-line projection, by 2023, we would have, we will exceed the 50. So even if they don't change the regulations, by 2023, we could...
2023 or 2033?
2033, excuse me.
33, okay.
We could exceed that 50 meg, megagrams per year, even without a change in regulation. So it's, it, um, we don't expect any, anyone, no one expects for them to raise that threshold. It'll stay at 50 or get smaller with all of the emphasis right now on, on emissions, global warming, and those kinds of things.
And the, so we're looking at increasing tipping fees at $2 a ton annually for five years, so that'll be like an increase of $10 over that five-year period per ton?
Yes.
So that would put us up in the $50 range and then that'll continue?
Yeah, it's, uh, actually from 2022 to, yeah, 2022 to 2026, the next four or five years at $2 a ton.
Mm-hmm.
And then from '27 to '35 at $1.50 a ton. And that's just what, procreating and using, um, compounding interest and, and inflating our labor expenses and operating expenses and all those kinds of things, that's what's necessary to keep a positive fund balance. We would think you'd want to maintain a, uh, some sort of million, $2 million, $3 million in there that you would have to raise it even more if you wanted to, and you'll see in a few slides where that occurs. But you'll have better information to determine what you need to do with your tipping fee in a couple of years, so.
Jim?
We thought. Go ahead.
It, it is important to note, though, that the tipping fee calculations that run across the top of the chart that Jim will get to in the next couple of slides, um, is based on the worst-case scenario in which landfill gas collection becomes necessary in 2023. If that does not occur, then that changes the amount of cost that the city's required, uh, revenue to, to have, and, um, that tipping fee would not have to be adjusted. So you have to look at that, that slide as, this is the worst-case scenario saying that I have to buy all this equipment, uh, perform landfill gas emissions collection, and do the closure, post-closure contract. If you did not have all of those things happening at once, that will have an impact on what the tipping fees need to be. So this is ju, this is not to say that we intend to raise the fees to those levels. This is intended to say if all of these things happened and an administration changes the, uh, requirement from 50 to 34, then it could be possible that we would have to do all of these things and this would be the ultimate cost for it. So hopefully that helps.
Thank you.
Um, uh, the next slide is, is getting in more specific about the, uh, capital costs for equipment, and Commissioner France was absolutely right with some of this equipment costing in excess of a million dollars. Spreading that cost out over multiple years to balance the budget or equalize your payments makes sense that, so that you could read this, it's actually on two slides, but, um, you can see down here that a scraper right now is 1.15 million and you inflate it out. Um, in four or five years, it's 1.27, and four or five years later, um, you're 1.4 million. So just for the scrapers. We've got, uh, bulldozers that are $750,000, um, $836,000 if you inflate it out 10 more years. Um, we've got some assumptions in here as far as rebuilding equipment versus buying new equipment, and we've tried to show that these life cycle costs here and, um, because of switching from the south end of the landfill to the north end of the landfill, we'll actually need an extra dozer to work both sides of the mountain at the same time. We're rebuilding, we're buying a new dozer here, but then we're going to keep the old one instead of trading it in and rebuilding it just so we can work both sides of the hill for a while. Um, and that'll mean an additional, um, person, um, operator as well. But go into the next one, Jim. You can see, uh, there's, these, these go from no expenses or $33,000, um, in excess of $2 million annually based on what year equipment falls into, into being, into their replacement cycle. And that's not saying that they always last that long or that you absolutely need to trade them in that year. That's a management decision when they, they get to that end of their life, so.
There's something that strikes me about this, this, um, this schedule. If you look at the period just from 2021 to 2026, it comes up, if my mental math is correct, to a little over $3 million in expenses over six years. That's $500,000 a year. Well, you've been coming out ahead, $450,000 a year the last couple of years that you haven't been setting aside equipment. That $450,000 is all eaten up by our equipment schedule. And that's, I want to emphasize how important it is to have this kind of thing in place so, you know, you know, going down the road, happy as a clam because you're making $450,000 a year and hey, we don't need to do anything, when in fact you're losing money.
Right. Now, that, that's absolutely our point.
That's, that's a pretty basic thing.
We need to save early and often to...
Yeah.
To be prepared for these things.
Absolutely. I mean, when you get, get hit a, a million-dollar scraper bill, um, that gets your attention.
And there are a couple of things in this chart that aren't actually in the totals. Demolishing the old shooting range, landfill, shelter, um, and then remediating the dump that's on the same property. And we expect that to cost $300,000 to $400,000. And those aren't included in these annual totals because we have not budgeted for them yet. I know, uh, City Manager Mike Skreg, uh, saved us a lot of money in his negotiations with the baseball fields because a lot of the excess dirt that they're using there, we're going to be able to use to, to place over the top of that old landfill to help put it to bed. So it's, uh, um, about half of the soil we need, but if it's, uh, when you have to buy it and it's anywhere from $4 to $10 a cubic yard, that's, uh, money well spent, so. Um, but that is $400,000 that the next Public Works Director is going to ask you for.
Um, how are we looking? I know, and I'm thinking back to a Commission Information Memorandum, I think from last year or the year before, where we have former landfill sites in Salina, former dump sites that we're still trying to get remediated. How many of those do we still have out there and do we have any sense of what, um, our obligations are going to be for, um, dealing with those responsibly?
Yes, ma'am. I invited the, the state, the state person who's in charge of the, um, uh, KDHE Old City Dump Program. Uh, we, we toured them and the only, and we've, if you, if you recall, we've closed, uh, three of them in, in about the last 10 years. We've, uh, done the remediation work to, uh, three of them and completed all that work. Mr. Height, the inspector, came down, inspected them, passed them, so they are good to go. All the other sites are, uh, considered good to go. The only site that remains is the old shooting range. That is also an old city dump. Uh, and that, that simply means what they, you know, in the seventies, they used to dig a hole and put trash in it and they cover it. Well, over time, that, um, breaks down, and if you walked on top of that property where it, where it's kind of up on the hill above where the, the PD used to shoot, um, there's a lot of voids and that kind of thing in it. So he said in order to require this, much like the other projects that we did, um, you remove all the scrap metal that's out on top. You, uh, apply 18 inches of soil across the entire site, so it ends up being 64,000 cubic yards. That's how we came up with these numbers. Uh, 30-some thousand if, if we get that soil from baseball, from the baseball fields, uh, which, you know, cuts it in half. And then we seed it and that site will be closed. So the, the short answer is this is the only one that's left.
This is the only one that's outstanding?
Yes, ma'am.
The rest of them have all been remediated or closed like they need to be closed per the state and we won't have any more obligations to those other sites?
Well, again, over time, they can settle. So if, if the inspector, uh, what they do is the inspectors go out, it's unannounced, they don't, you know, it's just they go tour these old sites. They know where all the locations are, uh, periodically. So in the future, one of those sites could settle out more, which would require some more remediation. On one of our remediation sites, we were able to sell the scrap metal and we actually came out ahead in cost, you know, in our costs. Uh, in another one, it was more, uh, we had to buy enough to, um, we, we had enough material in place that all we had to do was re-excavate the site. So the only expenses we had was grass, seed, and, um, erosion matting. This one is different in that we need so much soil. Uh, normally, I wouldn't expect them to be, uh, anywhere near this extent.
Thank you. Yeah, I was just trying to get a sense of future obligations on, on those sites as well. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, um, before we get to the, the final three scenarios, um, for landfill gas collection, uh, you know, the very first thing I mentioned was the, the first assumption is that we have 85,000 tons a year going to the, the landfill. Um, we've averaged that for the last three years, but, uh, to get, um, a little more specific, this has been a, a year that no one expected and kind of, well, how has that impacted, uh, the whole landfill operations? Was a question that Commissioner Hodget has asked, so we're going to try to attempt that. In 2018, we had 84,828 tons in the landfill, so just right under 85,000. Last year, we had 85,560, so we were just a little bit over 85,000. Um, that's been pretty steady for the last four or five years. Now, this year has been so unusual with stay-at-home orders, businesses closed, um, we've changed our recycling that we're doing in the city. So we wanted to, to see where we're at this year compared to the previous two years. Um, so year-to-date numbers from now through August 1st, we didn't want to include September since it wasn't complete yet, but from January through August 1st of 2018, we had, uh, 58,275 tons. Um, last year, we had 58,150 tons. And this year, we're right at 57,971 tons. So if you do the math, we're 180 tons less than where we were last year and we're, um, 300 tons less than we were in 19, or 20, or in 18, excuse me. So we're very, very close. That's kind of just normal operations. We see through more than 300 tons per month difference in just all of these columns. So it's very, very close to a normal year, even with all the abnormal stuff we've been putting up with, so.
Thank you. I appreciate that and I didn't know if it was something where we would be able to see, um, numbers reflected from the discontinuation of our curbside recycling and for the drive-through recycling center having been closed during, for quite a period of time during COVID, and I didn't know what that...
That's the thing about our recycling, that we get, we're going through an extraordinary amount of effort, but a lot of that stuff is just site, uh, it's very, very big, but it's light. That our, our recycling center, which has been enormously positive and had, growing at about a 20% annual rate, only collected the last two years about 500 tons, 525 tons. 525 tons out of 85,000 is like point 2, 0.2%. It's less than 1%. So, um, there's a whole lot of effort going into recycling, but as far as the actual tonnage, um, it, it's not making a lot of, a lot of difference in the tonnage anyway. Now, that's not to say that we're only recycling, you know, .002% as a community because there are very, very, um, enormous efforts to recycle, um, iron and metal and cardboard on the private side that aren't captured in those numbers, so. But we are very, very close to where we were last year, even with the 500 tons that we've been recycling. Does that answer your questions?
It does. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Yep. No, I just, um, it was a good exercise because we really didn't know either. Um, we felt like we were down. Um, I know Larry and Jim said they had some months that were down, April was down, but we've made up for it in other areas, so. Um, the next slide is, as Jim Toits said, this is the worst-case scenario. How could we keep, maintain a positive fund balance if you had to start doing landfill gas in 2023? So scenario A is where we do gas collection in 2023. We do our next cell construction five years from now, then we do that closure contract in six or seven years from now. We buy the, the equipment and stuff as per the schedule. You would need to raise the tipping fees by $2 a year for the next five years, five or six years, and $1.50 a year thereafter, which is about a 2% to 2.5% increase, which is very, really very standard. I know you say, well, that's, we're at $63 a ton in 2035. Well, all the other landfills on that list, we would expect them to raise their fees by 2% to 3% a year as well. So we think we're still going to be middle of the pack if that did happen, but, um, scenario A, which is the very worst-case scenario, if you look over here, in 2032, we get down to a $32,000 balance.
Is that with those, with those, uh, rate increases?
Yes.
That's factored into that already, so that is...
That's, all of these rate increases give you this resulting fund balance for the three different scenarios. We want to keep the rates the same. Um, you know, best-case scenario is you don't have to do it till 2033 and we still have 6 or 7 million in the bank, so. But you'd have to start collecting that early if you want to have it when you need it. It's, it's not like you can just change your rates by $10 or $15 a year to make up for it. You want that gradual increase, 2% or 3% a year, um, that is standard with the, you know, operating costs and, uh, fees that you would pay somewhere else. Working with Debbie Pack, our finance manager, she helped us not only look at the capital side, but all these... manager, she helped us not only look at the capital side, but all these other things as far as personnel, healthcare, operating expenses, inflating those the way she would normally do it. We've added inflation on the construction contracts. She's added the cost to bond on all of those construction contracts. And this is the, for a ballpark number, this is exact, is as exact as we can make it at this time with the information that we have. You'll have a lot better information two or three years from now on what you want to do with fees. And you'll also have a lot better idea of what you need to do as far as landfill gas collection. You don't, and if worse came to, if push came to shove, worst-case scenario, you wouldn't have to do that closure contract. You could postpone it indefinitely as well. It's not going to, they won't, they won't tell you how it affects your bond rating and stuff until it starts affecting it. So we didn't get any good answers out of them on what's a normal number for this, or how does it impact your financial ratings. It's just that you have to calculate it every year and it is considered an obligation for the city when it's necessary for the closure, post-closure.
So a question about that, and that's, that has always been kind of a mysterious calculation. You know, the engineers do it and you come out with this number at the end. If we were to close a couple of cells, would the calculation the next year reflect that and show that our closure cost is now lower than it used to be?
Yes. Yes, that's the intent, is it?
Okay.
We would drop it from 10 million down to, you know, four or five.
Okay.
That those would be considered closed and the post-closure, to maintain those, might go up a little bit.
Yeah.
But that's still insignificant compared to trying to maintain a live cell.
And the reason why is because it's calculated on volume of waste that are in open cells. So the greater the volume, the greater the cost to close.
Landfill gas collection system, once it is installed, it will be installed over the entire landfill, including the pre-subtitle D portion. They'll collect gas, you know, and there's a lot of assumptions with that gas collection. Right now, you can collect the gas and actually flare it to get rid of it. With all of the environmental things that are going on and global warming and emissions, we don't know how long the landfills are going to be able to do that. And the cost of a collection system and/or a pipeline to do something with that gas is another, you know, $5 million. It seems like everything Larry does at the landfill is $5 million.
[laughing]
No, it's just picking on Larry there, but it's very expensive. There's no, there's no natural gas pipeline real close that we can connect to. The other option is you can capture that gas, compress it, and use it to operate your own equipment with compressed natural gas. But there again, you have to have a lot of gas and a lot of equipment that makes it cost-effective for that investment. But we're making the assumption that right now that we can flare that gas once we collect it. Because apparently, burned gas is better environmentally than raw gas, according to the rules today.
So currently, you have, you know, we're making projections as to when we're going to need to do that. But there's really, from, I guess, from legislative, we have no idea where anyone stands on being, having, being required to collect that. That's just discussion that's out there in the future.
The EPA, when working through KDHE, went through all of the formal actions that they deemed necessary with the hearings and notices and comments to make it happen. But then, when the Trump administration took office, him and the EPA, he cut their budgets and he restricted them on some of the things that they could enact. And this was one of the things that he actually, or his administration actually stopped. So they were ready to do it. It was imminent. And with this change in administration, it didn't happen.
To drop the, the number, but not to, but not to require it to be captured instead of burn off?
We don't, we don't have any idea. That is just speculation right now.
Okay, that's just, okay.
That's just speculation as far as the, whether or not it'll have to be captured in the future. It's just all the signs, environmental concerns, concerns for the planet. We don't know that, you know, just the impacts of all the wildfires right now as far as impacts on the planet. It's going to be years before we know how much carbon and stuff's been released, so. And I guess definitely welcome your questions. That's what the whole point of the study session is. But the next slide, Jim. We tried to just explain that we know we're going to build new cells about every five years. And those are expensive. They're $2 to $3 million. We're accruing closure costs and post-closure costs every time, every day that goes by, you know, we open a cell and we're going to need to close that cell eventually. So those costs are, in the background, escalating. The equipment to operate the landfill is very expensive. We're trying to spread those costs out and annualize those. But we went through some rebuilds in lieu of buying new equipment. And some of those have worked out and some of them haven't. So buying new equipment out there, when you're talking 750,000 to over a million, is very, very expensive. And then, just the changing regulations, as you said, we don't know for sure when the gas collection is going to, going to take place for sure. And then, you know, five or 10 years from now, we don't even know if we'll be able to flare it if we do collect it. So those, those may be new expenses that some future commission is going to have to deal with. But we don't want an empty purse for the folks that are going to have to deal with that. We want to build our bank account and be prepared as much as we can. So this is an enterprise fund and has to, has to pay for itself, but provide service to the public. And then, you're going to have a few more things to do as far as next year. The soil remediation project, we had kind of a plan worked out with KDHE to use some of the soils excavated from the river project to use as the fill. If the decision is made to postpone or delay the river project at all, we're going to have to come up with another source of dirt to complete that. But we have an approved plan with KDHE right now. The soil from the baseball enterprises and the field work is going to help. But we are going to have to have a plan to complete that within the next couple of years. And that's, you know, probably $200,000 to $400,000. And then we're also going to have to make a decision later on. We're going to prepare some information for you as far as recycling in the city and whether or not to renew the lease on the recycling center, if you want to go to some, go to curbside collection, if you want to buy the building, continue leasing it, do something completely different. Those are, you need a lot more information to make that decision. We're going to try to bring that to you later this year.
Did I miss something? What's the soil remediation at the animal shelter?
The animal shelter, shooting range, landfill, that's...
Okay, you're calling that the animal. Okay.
Yeah. It's had several different purposes.
Another one?
I was like, yeah, I thought you said we only had the old shooting range, so that's...
No, it was, it was...
It was animal. You're correct. Okay.
It had a... Not a lot alive, but it's the same spot out on Old Forty.
Yeah.
It's what you'd call a multipurpose location.
Okay.
Yeah, we're going to have to clean it up.
That makes sense. Okay.
If I could, I would just clarify a question, Mayor Hoppich, that you had asked earlier in the presentation when we were looking at Slide 8. So if I can, I want to back up and just cover that real quick. The projections that we are making are assuming kind of the worst-case scenario in that in the next 10 years, these, that the threshold becomes 34. I can't, I'm certainly not prepared to make a projection on whether or not we have the potential in the next 10 years to hit 50. But if they make the change of the threshold to 35, it is very likely that we will hit that threshold, possibly as soon as the 2026 test. Jim, Jim kept referring to 2023 and on the slide, you saw 2021, because Jim was referring to the time that we would have to implement the system 30 months later. The test will take place in 2021. We would have to implement 30 months later if it were to be over that threshold. So I just, I kind of wanted to just clarify those two points.
Five years is 21. You're right.
Yeah.
I didn't explain that very well.
A question about the gas, and I, I don't want to poke the bear, so to speak, but what effect does the fact that we are now putting all of our yard waste in the landfill have on the gas production from that facility? Because that's a lot of organics that's going in there that at one time, we at least tried not to. Do you think that has, accelerates our progress towards this threshold or not?
I can't remember the exact tonnages, but the tonnages, kind of like our recycling, in comparison with 85,000, it's a really small percentage.
It's a pretty small portion.
And the thing about yard waste, whether we're taking it to our landfill or having it processed off-site like we used to, it was producing the same gas wherever it was. It's just a matter of if you're having to collect it and care for it. So, but yeah, it was, it was, it's not as small a tonnage as our recycling. It is a lot wetter, heavier, organic material, but not everyone was having, was collecting it when we did have it available. But we had talked about that and didn't think it was a significant amount, but we're, we're not experts on it, Rod, so we can't really give you an accurate technical answer on it.
But it should be remembered that we're only talking about the delta because landfill, the landfill has always had green waste being added to it. So the delta is really what was being separated by the program. So it's about 1,500 to 2,000 tons, you know, divided into 85,000. And that tells you, you know, how much more we're adding. And then, obviously, then the emissions that are produced, there's a percentage of that that is methane. So I think if you calculate it, you're going to find that, yes, it's, it's increased, but it's going to be a very small percentage.
I do have one question on the last slide, on the last point on your summary. Decision on the drive-through recycling centers required by the end of the year. And I know that we're almost to October now and the end of the year is going to be coming up very quickly. So I guess, what, what are we doing to help prepare to make that decision? I know there's been a lot of volatility in the recyclable market. There's different options out there that we've heard just a little bit about in terms of other ways that we could go when collecting our own recycling, whether that is restriction of materials, you know, whether it makes sense for us to transport our materials down to Hutchinson, et cetera, et cetera. What are we doing to kind of get ready to help us make an informed decision about that so that we're not meeting on, in mid-December and don't, you know, feel like we have the information that we, that we need at hand?
Would you like all the questions on that at once?
Well, I'll, I'll start off with, you know, we have, we went from a small subscription program to a citywide drop-off location. And we heard a lot of different comparisons with Abilene and other major collection sites. And not hearing any guidance as far as the level of capital expenditure that the commission would like to see us explore, we have not done that as far as a major recycling. We have not looked into what it would take to buy, buy Kmart and do a full-blown operation to separate the plastics and the papers and the aluminums. And we were going to report on the productivity and the efficiency of the recycling center and then get further guidance from you. And it's not that we have to make a decision by the end of the year. We were going to bring it to you by the end of the year so that we can make a decision on whether or not to renew that lease in June, in March.
February or March.
Right. So it's, that's, that's what we were doing.
I think one, one point that I would add, though, is while, you know, during Jim's tenure, I think we have looked at multiple buildings in Salina. We regularly look at LoopNet. We know what CompPro is putting out, you know, what's available in the city. And I think Jim is echoing what my point has been all along, a commitment to change our operations to the degree that we are fully separating all of our recyclables. The very first thing I would ask is, I have to have capital in order to purchase a building large enough to do that. The, the small set of warehouses that are just north of General Services that were for sale earlier this year, if I recall, would have been over $1 million. And that would not have been the most ideal location with the way the buildings are, are laid out in a linear fashion. It would, we probably could make it work, but it would not have been ideal. So, I mean, those are the, the numbers you're talking about. I think all of us felt from staff, I won't say that, I'll speak for myself. I felt that it was first, what I thought was most important was to bring all of the, the very real, very present capital expenses that we are facing now before we start talking about how much you want to invest in, in that. Because none of the slides that we have done today, that Jim has presented today, include the number for purchasing a facility that would give us the capability of doing full separation.
I get that. I think, oh, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to...
No, go ahead.
I think that, you know, I appreciate having this and I love having, you know, our obligations for whatever, the next 10 years, 20 years, whatever. But I feel like globally, philosophically, strategic, plan-wise, that what our recycle, what our plan for recycling and diverting waste from the landfill is, is a component part of that. Because if, you know, if we're talking about making a significant investment that can divert a whole bunch of materials from the landfill and perhaps make an impact that allows us to defer, you know, methane gas collection by two years or five years or whatever, then, I mean, to me, that's, that's a huge win. So I don't know how you incorporate it into this conversation, but I think it needs to be, we at least need to, to talk about it and see where we're all at on, on the governing body.
From a solid waste engineering perspective, I haven't found anyone that would be willing to say that if, if we would have enacted community-wide recycling as it was originally presented, we are still only talking about 2.4% of the total waste that we're producing. So at, at, I, I just, I think that's important. I'm not, I'm not, you know, saying that moving in that direction is not the right direction, but it, residential recycling, which is what, you know, because of city collections, that's all we do, represents a pretty small portion of the total waste stream that we take. As the majority of the waste that Larry deals with, I think he would say is commercially generated by business and industry versus residential. I think, I, I just, I just think that's, you know, probably an important caveat.
Jim, what's, what is kind of going on in the recycling industry out there now? You know, we've, we've discussed the, in the past, you know, the, it's now costs us to take stuff to Hutchinson is, and there was really no outlet for some of the different materials. Where's that at nowadays?
I, I don't know that it has significantly changed. And, you know, especially with this year is not probably the best gauge for, you know, making a, seeing a good picture of that just due to the COVID-19 pandemic. But I am, I'm not aware of a significant change in the industry from what we've briefed previously.
I guess the issue you just spoke to, as I was going to ask, if, if we were going to, at some point, make a decision on the building downtown, I would want to know if our plan for recycling included, collecting it separate. Because what I've been told, that building's not large enough to have the fire suppression and the other.
Yeah.
Just the space you need to, to do that.
Yeah, I mean, it, it just, the, the short answer upfront is, you're, I think you'll hear at least from, from my side, from me, I can't say for all staff, but if I had to say it today, I would say it's in our fiscal best interest to buy that building regardless of what we do with it. Because I need space. Every department needs space. We have vehicles that we park outside that are, you know, a quarter million dollars apiece. That building is in an ideal location. It's a good building. We have a favorable contract that would enable us to purchase it. We've done a lot of improvements. So, I mean, those are all the things that I would probably tell you. Whether or not that is the site for something that we do in the future, you know, obviously depends on you. But that's, that building is just over 50... But that's, that building is just over 5,900 square feet. To put that into perspective, Abilene's is over 11,000 square feet. Obviously, we're, we're going to have a, a larger footprint than they are, and our building is less than half that size. So that sort of puts it into perspective in how much bigger of a building we would need.
I had just one other question, but something you said prompted a second one. Is there that much difference in what is collected in residential recycling versus what's collected in commercial? Not, not the amount, but just the, the type of material that would make sense to combine them into just one program rather than, if, if commercial is larger, you know, why are we duplicating the whole system for residential?
I, I don't know if I fully understand the question, sir, I'm sorry.
Well, I mean, if the materials that are collected commercially are the same materials that are collected residentially, and it sounds like we have a
I think a lot of the commercial recycling, the Walmarts, the Dillons, the Targets, they're recycling a lot of their paper products and cardboard internally, and those don't get reported.
Right.
As far as tonnages, Salina iron and metal and the scrap metal business is probably the biggest tonnage that's collected for Saline County. And they do collect aluminum, they do collect cardboard, but they don't collect drinking bottles and some of those kinds of things.
Different item, different
Different mix of items. Their car frames versus pop cans.
Good analogy. And this one, I don't necessarily expect an answer to today, but I think I worded it correctly. What percentage drop in collection of trash would be needed to decrease the cell turnover cost and post-closure expenses to yet not reduce your tonnage, you know, the incoming money to, if you want to extend the, the life of the landfill, if you're collecting less trash, how much less can you collect before you start sinking your operating expenses?
We haven't looked at that. I know we did look at just the remaining life, and we've talked about this in study sessions and commission information memorandums before too, but the current landfill has 180 years left.
About 140, I believe.
140 years left. But there's a difference of opinion there. But we do run a soil, we do run a soil deficit before we get there. So to keep it, to keep it in operation, we would have to purchase the cover material somewhere in the proximity.
If everybody gave a ludicrous example, we collected half as much trash.
We, we would sink very quickly.
Yeah.
You know, to answer your question, I did actually look at that a number of years back in terms of, you know, every landfill operation is sized to be optimum for a certain volume. Ours happens to be built around the 80,000 to 120,000-ton range. If we go outside of those parameters, our unit prices go up very quickly. If we go above that, we don't have enough staff and equipment and don't have enough space to handle everything. So you have to buy, instead of having one scraper, you have to have two scrapers. Instead of having, I don't know, four or five staff, you have to have eight or 10 staff. If you go below that 80,000 threshold, then you can no longer afford the level of equipment and the amount of space we have, and your unit prices also go up as you, so 80,000 tons is what works out to be kind of the threshold. We can survive at 75 and 70 probably, but our unit prices are going to go up. And if we get to 50,000 tons, our unit prices are really going to go up. So there's a, there's a kind of a best fit for the organization and the amount of refuse that we have to handle. And we would have to make substantial changes, I think, in the way we operate that landfill if we go outside of those parameters.
That would have to be a slow, scheduled, deliberate decrease.
You know, I'm, I'm not quite sure how, how we would approach it. I just, I just know that when you, you know
The answer you gave is the answer I was looking for.
You know, if, if you're looking at a very large landfill, they're going to be set up with multiple scales and lots of equipment and lots of staff. And there's a point at which, you know, you have to transition, and that is not always a smooth transition.
Right, but that, and that would be the slow programmed transition, if you wanted to eventually get it smaller, but couldn't do it over in the two or three-year period.
You know, even if we did it slowly, our, our efficiency would change. So it's not a very specific answer to your question, but generally, our landfill operation is sized to handle about 80,000 to 120,000 tons. And when you project numbers outside of that range, the unit prices get unmanageable.
And at the time you did that analysis, we were actually looking for trash from outside, places to bring in.
Yeah, what tonnes did we lose when we lost McPherson and how did, how did that affect our, affect us financially?
We lost 20% of the total volume we were averaging. Back at that point, we were averaging over 100,000 tons a year. I think the last year they were with us, we were at 105, just to put it into perspective, but a full 20% of our total waste stream. And, and what Rod is referring to, even the, not only the number of people that we hire, but the size of the equipment that we buy because we have to ensure that we are able to meet a certain compaction rate for the material. And, and so all of that has to do with how many, what size piece of equipment you have, how many times you drive over it, how many people do you need in a schedule in order to do that? How much, how much leachate is being produced and, you know, the volume calculations that are necessary to make sure that you have the leachate cycle functioning? So pretty much everything in the landfill, as Rod described, is set between 80,000 and 120,000 tons.
You know, we, we could do things like cut hours of operation. We could be open only three days a week. That would help reduce, help adjust for those reduced tonnages, but it is also a convenience factor for the public. In other words, we may have private haulers who have to sit there with their trucks full of stuff for three or four days, and that's not a good situation to be in. So it, it generates all kinds of, of
And even those scenarios would not replicate our original scenario, which is just as a society, we stop producing as much trash, which is not going to happen in the next three years, but just long, but I appreciate the answers. Thank you.
Well, we did make some assumptions as far as, we do think that we will divert more trash even as the city gets larger. You know, we do expect the city to grow in 10 or 15 years from now. The assumption that we're not going to increase tonnage is a pretty significant one when you try to make these calculations.
And we certainly do plan to bring back another presentation about the SDRC and all of these things here in the next few months. So we'll be working that and have some of the detailed explanation that Jim is, you know, kind of spitballing here from the back row when we do that in a couple of months.
If I might make one additional comment, and this goes back to the yard waste question. I understand that it's a pretty small portion of our total waste stream, but I, I would take issue with the statement that it deteriorates the same outside the landfill as it does inside the landfill. Inside the landfill is largely anaerobic, and it's going to generate methane and carbon dioxide. If you compost it properly with the proper mix of materials and a proper processing, what you get is carbon dioxide and heat, not methane, at least not in significant amount. So it is a little bit different in that way.
It is. It does decompose differently. You're absolutely correct.
I just wanted to clarify that because your original answer was kind of, it's the same. Well, it's, it's not.
Okay, do we have any other questions for staff? If not, we have about five minutes, and so we'll open it up to the public if anybody has a comment or something they would like to make.
Yeah, Ken Ritz. I've been recycling for since 1981 on a commercial level. Yes, there's substantial difference between residential, industrial, and commercial. And I'm directly aware of that. And the markets were deteriorating before COVID-19. They had respond, but, but the markets are frantic, is the word. I've sold corrugated at $5 a ton. I've sold corrugated at $225 a ton. That was within three weeks of each other, believe it or not. But anyway, you really need to bring people from KDHE Solid Waste Division, Emery who works on the composting side. And I appreciate that Commissioner Franz is aware that, that composting is an entirely different process than, than anaerobic doings. So anyway, there, I assume they're still in operation. Several years ago, the annual works conference, which is, would have been its 26th year this year if it had been held, and it may be held yet. We toured, Waste Management has landfill there in Topeka, and we toured their gas collection not out in the field. But they have a building with, I think it was four gas turbines that they generate electricity with and put back into the grid. And I don't know if, it didn't, I didn't see any storage tanks or means of storage. The obvious advantage would be if they could, if they could use it for peak power, which is what West aren't, Evergy does. And because they can fire up gas generators, it's about 10 minutes. And I didn't realize this, but with coal-fired plants, it can take all day to shift much. And nuclear, you're just pretty much stuck. You just have to run them and burn off the waste. What you can't sell, you have to burn off as heat. So it's literally wasted. So anyway, but, but Emery is a wonderful fellow. He's the replacement for Ken Baker, who was the compost guy for 20-some years at KDHE. He took over for him. I've had him in town twice or three times stop in. We're, we're going to start on the composting side and doing some other things. But guys, remember, it's carbon that we're dealing with and paper. Guess what it's made from? Mostly wood. Guess what limbs are made of? Mostly wood and leaves. So it's not just the yard stuff. It's food scraps. And if you look at the percentage, paper products are the largest percentage that goes into the landfill. I've got numbers here, I've, that I compiled from the 2004 Waste Characterization Study. I've passed those out to commissioners several times. No one's ever said boo. I hope I made accurate assumptions. I would like to talk with the folks up in Chicago who did the work to make sure that I haven't created a compounding error. But you can see from that both how different it is, which category you're in, and what I feel from what I know in our own experience and from reading and talking with others who know differently and more than I do, that we're looking at about 90% potential diversion. So that leaves 8,500 tons instead of 85,000 tons. And I don't recall the landfill ever doing over 100,000, but, but they may have. The most we ever recycled was about a little over 1,000 tons a year.
Okay, we need to give somebody, somebody else a chance.
I'm available anytime.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else that had any comments to make on this real briefly?
Phil Black, I'm on the Solid Waste Committee. I am not a spokesperson for them, but listening to you talk today, to me, suggested that we should be thinking about a 30, 20, 30, 40-year plan to reduce to zero. And with that as the goal, everything else sort of falls in place. And I would argue that there is some, that we could actually take up something like that. Part of what the, the plan itself says is to establish a schedule for the reduction of waste volumes in consideration of the following: source reduction, reuse, recycling, composting, as well as land disposal. And the, one of the problems we've run into on the committee last February, one of the guys, chair, said, what is our, are we here just a rubber stamp? And if you know me, I'm not a rubber stamp kind of guy. But we are responsible for the plan being created and for it being revised and, and given to you. Where it gets tricky is that the city statute says that, or city ordinance says that no employee, none of you can be a member of the committee, whereas the state says, sure, absolutely, you can have representatives, city engineers, whomever you want. So the two things I could see the Solid Waste Committee doing that you might think about would be, one, to figure out what exactly it is we're supposed to do. What are, what, who should be a member and try to give you recommendations to resolve the conflict between the two. And secondly, I think it would be perfectly within our scope to begin to think about a long-term plan or even to ask the question, number one, would zero-waste plan over 30 years be a good thing? Number two, what would be the logistics to accomplish that? And three, which is where my own school board background comes in, how could we do it in a way that's not divisive? So it'd be more unifying than divisive. And I think that's perfectly within the, what the committee could and should be doing. So I just bring that to you as something to think about, and hopefully we'll, I think our next meeting is in December, right, Jim?
Right.
Yeah, so we'll see what happens then, but something for you to consider. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Black. Okay, we're going to take a break. We will be back here at 4 o'clock for the commission meeting. We do have one presentation we would like to make before you leave. Do you have something there with you?
Yeah, Mayor Hoppick, this is the last meeting for Jim Coach, our Public Works Director, so we just wanted to provide a plaque for him real quick and just recognize him for services, his service to the city.
Jim, could you come forward? I know you didn't want to do something during the meeting, so we're going to do this in between, so.
At least sort of not in the meeting, huh?
Yeah.
We'll only work with you so far. We can't respect you all the way.
Yeah. For those of you who don't know, Jim will be relocating to Omaha, is that correct? Jim, we wish you good luck, and we thank you for all your hard work and dedication to the city. Thank you, sir.